It's like we're all here tonight, so we'll go ahead and kick it off. Any questions about the update agenda, update agenda tonight? All right, any questions about the formal agenda? Andy, you want to get everyone a heads up?
I do, and so we are going to be asking, staff's going to be asking that we postpone the second reading of item 13A to the September 23rd meeting. We got a request from the school districts late this afternoon to consider some changes to the materials. The school districts in conversation would like to have the opportunity to have some more conversation within Adams 12, and I'd like to reach out as well to the other school districts. And so coming back on September 23rd will allow us to engage in that conversation with those individuals and come back with any alternatives or additional recommendations based on those conversations.
Any concerns? So when I ask staff if there's any changes to the agenda, then you'll bring that forward, and so then I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Any other items on the agenda, on the formal agenda tonight? I have a whole list of things we have to get people's names to. Is that what you were going to ask?
That's what I was listening to.
Perfect. All right, we have 7A, which is a resolution commending this agenda. Help me tap. 7B. 7B is Anna Sparks for EPAP.
I'll be Anna.
All right, we have 7C, which is Dyno Fest. I put that down for Liberta because you asked for that. 7D is National Immunization Awareness Month. 7E is Women's Equality. I have Karen because you asked for it.
Great, thanks.
9A is the first kind of hearing related to Dr. Cog. Justin, you want that one?
Yeah, sure.
And 13A will be removed, and then we have 13B, which is updating the budget.
I'll do 13B.
All right, with that, we will jump into briefings. Quasi judicial public hearing review.
Yes, and before I start that, I had a question for counsel. Under the Fair Campaign Practices Act, which is a state law, you can adopt one resolution in support of the ballot questions that you've adopted. And I'm wondering if you wanted us to prepare a resolution in support of these ballot questions and put it on the agenda. It could be one resolution in support of all of them, or we could do one for each of the ballot questions, and it's totally counsel's discretion, but I just wanted to draft those and put them on your agenda if you wanted to do a resolution in support of ballot questions. And you can do that for other ballot questions, by the way, not just yours, but other ballot questions.
Karen?
So I believe we did that last year.
We did.
So I think we should do it again. Moving all of ours in one would make sense. And then if Adams 12 does the mill levy, then I would like to also ask to do a resolution in favor of that.
Do you think vote on that on Wednesday this week officially? So we can talk about it on Tuesday. Justin?
I was also going to. He's already on that.
Did you press your button? You didn't press your button? I thought I saw your hand move. I did, didn't go off, but it's just double checking. All right.
And did we want those to go in September or October? Who we think of that?
Probably sooner rather than later.
Okay. So by the last meeting in September?
That works.
And I'll send it to counsel in advance.
Thank you.
So the first topic tonight is quasi judicial public hearing review. I was asked to quickly review the issues surrounding a quasi judicial hearing. That is when city council set as the trier of fact applying the law in a final decision for the city, which is appealable to court. So that's when you're acting in a quasi judicial capacity is when you're making a final decision that's appealable to a court. So the last decision for the city. And in general, quasi judicial decisions require notice. That's a big part of that. It requires an opportunity for all the parties involved to be heard, and it requires the application of legal standards. So for example, with land use, your land use code applied to the facts before you of a particular property. And this is a protected right to have a hearing. It is by the constitutional provision which requires due process. Everyone is entitled to a fair and impartial decision maker. So it is important. Element of this, as the last bullet indicates, that ex parte communications do not take place, and that means that council members should not talk with or collect information in advance of the hearing with regard to a matter that is currently pending in the city. And that is one of the functions of a fair hearing is not, is making your decision, as I have mentioned on numerous occasions, orientations in an email we sent you a couple weeks ago and throughout this. The important fact here is that you make your decision based upon the testimony and evidence that is provided to you at the hearing.
That's a question. How does, how do we determine which public hearings are quasi judicial, which ones are not?
Well, it usually has to do if there are rights affected. So for land use, you've got property rights affected, and that is an area of the law where the constitution requires due process rights, due process to protect those individual rights. So that's a classic example of where property rights are at issue, and so the hearing has to be done in accordance with due process standards. Let's see, what else here? To the next slide. So again, due process requires neutrality in adjudicated proceedings and entitles a person to an impartial decision maker. Any decision not based on evidence presented at the hearing and relevant review criteria can be overturned by the court. So of course, the concern here, if the trier of fact is listening to things outside of the hearing process, it is an avenue that can bring forth a claim and that your decision could be overturned by a court. And so actions that can lead to a due process violation. Again, ex parte communications with residents, developers outside of the hearing process, concrete actions that show prejudice on a specific pending quasi judicial action. I can't think of an example of that off the top of my head, but it would require, I think, a member of the council to take an action specific to the issue before you outside of the hearing process. Maybe, you know, encouraging people to come in opposition, something like that, which clearly shows a prejudice. And then finally, if you have a conflict of interest, this can also lead to a due process violation, and we're going to talk to what a conflict of interest is next. So our city code says that a conflict of interest means a personal interest which interferes with or influences or may interfere with or influence, or which reasonably be perceived by the public is interfering with or influencing the conduct of the duties or the exercise of the powers of a council member. And it includes restrictions against the use of confidential information, acceptance of gifts, et cetera. Campaign contributions are excluded from this, and I have a slide later that discusses that. Also, an interest is defined for this section, and it is also, a conflict of interest is defined in the charter, but for the code, an interest means a pecuniary property or commercial interest or any other interest, the primary significance of which is economic gain or the avoidance of economic loss. So it would have to be, for example, in a land use situation, you have an ownership interest in a company that's coming forth and promoting its development. So you would have to have a direct pecuniary interest or financial interest in the matter that is coming before you. Likewise, so here is what the code says, if you do have such a pecuniary interest, you've got to disclose that conflict of interest to council, and the council member with the conflict shall not vote on or be present during or participate in consideration of the matter in relation to which a conflict of interest is disclosed. This is also true for any bias you might have for an issue that is coming before a council. But conflict of interest, no member of council shall vote on any question in which the member has a financial interest other than a common public interest or on any question concerning the member's own conduct. So again, it has to be a financial interest in something the applicant is proposing, or if it has to do with your own conduct on council, you also cannot vote.
Can you go into a little more detail about the bias piece? Because everybody has a natural bias towards everything, right? But specifically related to this situation.
Yes, and I'm going there in my next slide.
Sorry.
That's okay. If a council member refuses to vote on a matter, it shall be recorded as a yes vote unless the refusal is based on a conflict of interest. So you can't sit at the hearing and refuse to vote. But you, you know, if you don't have a conflict or you don't have some kind of bias that causes you to recuse yourself. So the charter does not allow that, and it would be counted as a yes vote. If you have a conflict or you recuse yourself upfront due to bias, then you don't participate in the hearing, and this provision doesn't come into play. Okay, so let me talk a little bit more about bias, and then I'll get into campaign contributions. So a bias, and let's see, I want to go back, but I'm going to do it. Okay, let's see if I can do this right. So bias is described in the second bullet here. It's ex parte communications, like speaking with residents or developers, seeing presentations outside of hearing process on the exact issue that's coming before the board. So you can't discuss that, once the application is submitted on a land use issue, for example, you can't discuss that with residents, you shouldn't talk with the developer about the proposal, or take in information from the developer, see the plans in advance, that type of thing. That is considered an ex parte communication under case law, and in that instance, the term bias is used, and if you have that sort of bias, what you should do is note it for the record and recuse yourself from participating in the hearing. Does that make sense?
Okay. Jessica, and then Karen.
And there's a little, there's a little bit of difference there, if you'll note, between a bias, that's taking in ex parte communications, communications and information outside the hearing process, or a conflict of interest, which is an actual pecuniary interest or financial interest in the matter coming before council. They're two separate things. They both require recusal and nonparticipation.
So I, a couple of questions, and I've always wondered about this, and you know, it's a balancing act with maker projects. Because I'm the chair of the board, obviously I've heard presentations on this particular project multiple times before it came into the public or will be at the public hearing. So, and this is where it always got, you know, tricky in the past, and I've generally recused myself because of that. It seems like, again, it's going to be a perceived bias, whether it's real or perceived specifically in this situation.
Yeah, and let me answer that, and I don't want to talk about the maker hearing outside of the hearing process, but since you've asked a specific question as a hypothetical, let's just say if you're hearing from the developer and you're seeing plans, it's the communication of that information to you, not whether or not it's going to affect how you vote, or the case law goes through any, to any type of communications where you're getting information about the application in advance of the hearing that others do not have the opportunity to have.
So while it may or may not change how I voted, or if I were going to participate, it's because I have had information prior to.
A hearing.
About, okay.
Because again, the standard is base your decision on the evidence and information and testimony that is presented to city council at your hearing, not the planning commission hearing, which is a recommending body. It's what comes into you at the council meeting is what you have to base your decision on.
And so piggybacking on what Justin asked just a little bit ago about what is the difference, or when is it a quasi judicial, like for tonight, for instance, we have a public hearing for Dr. Cog, but is, that's not quasi judicial?
It isn't. It's a public hearing requirement under another statute that requires us to allow public input on a topic.
And so there is a difference between?
Yeah, and so land use affects people's property rights, and you're making a final decision affecting property rights here, so that's a quasi judicial decision, and that decision is appealable by the applicants or the citizens to a district court. And that's why the record must show that council's making its decision based upon, you know, the testimony and evidence at the hearing after notice to the applicant and to the citizenry and a fair hearing process. Thank you.
And Karen, then Justin.
That makes total sense, and I appreciate this presentation. I just wanted to ask if, if one or more of us needs to recuse ourselves, do we need to leave the room during that? How, or we don't sit in our chair during the hearing? How does that work?
Yeah, exactly. First of all, I'd encourage you to give me a call and talk through the facts. I really would, you know? Let's talk it through, make sure we see, you know, we understand whether or not you have a bias that should be disclosed or conflict of interest. And to my mind, it has to be disclosed on the record, and you should, you know, for a fair and impartial hearing is why you're disclosing it, and I would use those terms. We want the city council to have a fair and impartial hearing. I have received this information in the context of my work or my other activities, and therefore I'm going to recuse myself from the hearing process. At that point, you stand up, you walk out, you know, listen to the hearing, you don't debate in the hearing, and you don't vote in the hearing.
Thank you.
And again, if there's some kind of doubt, I'm always here, and that's a good rule of thumb for anybody for any hearing, you think you might have something, let's discuss it, because a lot of times, you know, it may not be a direct conflict, but typically, if it's about the project, it's going to be, so.
Okay, my question is about if these ex parte discussions, they don't really become ex parte until one application is actually submitted, is that correct?
Right, we usually run this, although it's not advisable before, but definitely, once the application has been submitted to our land use folks, that's when communications between the developer and citizens should be ceased on the project. And that information is on our website about quasi judicial, if you ever want to refer citizens to it, and the best, the best thing to do is if a developer approaches you or citizens, once it's pending, talk to staff, send their comments to staff, and staff will make sure if it's appropriate for the hearing that it's attached in some written format or consideration.
So does any of this apply before the application is submitted?
Well, it's not the best practice to start talking to a developer about applications that are coming to the city that you know are coming to the city, but the hard bright line is once the application is submitted, because it can change until then, and it does change, you know? People just decide they're not going to go forward. So, but when you get to court and somebody alleges some kind of ex parte communication, they don't necessarily have to go by that bright line. If they can convince a judge that it's something so extreme that you couldn't, you had a bias, you know, it's fair game probably for the court to consider.
Okay.
You know?
Best.
You may have answered my question with that, my bright line.
Yeah.
Just what is the threshold of what they say and what we say? Because when we have like our community meeting ambushed by 15 plus, a lot of staff there to help, you know, get them away from me, direct them where they need to go for their questions.
Exactly, yeah.
But if they were to sit there and say like, no, we talked to a certain council member at a meeting and stuff, but I guess the question being is, you know, it's their words saying they were talking to us, and they talked to us, and me saying like, we didn't have any substance in that conversation other than I can't talk about it.
Right.
Did that ever come back on any of the council members, like they were trying to approach us, and they, they said the words?
Right.
And I knew what they were talking about, but how do we differentiate?
So if we received a challenge on that issue, and we were in court, we would try to rehabilitate that, right, through testimony? You would say, hey, I, you know, they approached me, they started talking about it, I called the city manager, I called the development director over and asked them to focus their comments there, and that's how that went down. So we would rehabilitate that if it was an allegation in a lawsuit after the decision. Yeah. And that's why we started doing the map of developments too, where council can go in and see all of the pending developments on our website, as can others, and that means the application process has started. That's emailed to you too, so you know when it's official. I also wanted to make this point because I've heard this in past hearings, et cetera. So campaign donations do not trigger recusal. And there is specific law that says that you can receive campaign donations, and as long as they're made in accordance with Campaign Practices Act, and as long as they're made in accordance, in accordance with campaign law, it is not relevant, you know, that you later in your elected official capacity hear, hear a pending application from somebody who may also have given you money in your campaign. Now, there's another bullet there, and I want to just emphasize, there can be extraordinary situations or extreme situations. And, but normally, if you've contributed to a campaign to the amount allowed by the law, it is nothing that would challenge our due process requirements in a later hearing that involved that entity. Are there questions on that? That's the current state of the law, and that's why, you know, folks often want to change campaign practices law, but they're separate. As long as you donate in accordance with the Campaign Practices Acts, you can conduct your elected official duties without fear of a conflict there. So that's all I had on this, and again, if you think you have an issue that's conflict or bias, I would just talk it through with me, and let's make sure we're on the same page, and then recuse on the record, you know, it requires a brief explanation. I feel I may have bias, I, you know, I've, whatever, I've seen these proposals in advance of the hearing, and in, in, in trying to have a fair hearing in front of city council, I'm going to recuse myself. And I could give you a script for that, if you wanted to, but give me a call if you think you have any of these issues.
Jessica, and then Justin.
I'm just going to ask, I know we get a map of all the quasi judicial areas, but is there, can we get an email that just has the dates of when applications were submitted?
Yeah.
Justin?
And any in particular, honestly, it's fine to say, when was this submitted? It's fine, you know, just to be sure.
I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. You get the packets of all the information before the actual public hearing, reading that information before the hearing starts is allowed, right?
So that is, yes, because that's the packet prepared for you, and you will note that staff always said, I like to make the packet and the information therein a part of the record of this hearing. That should be standard practice. So then, everything you've read is on the record at the hearing, and is evidence. Yes, I mean, we also have to comply with the open meetings law that requires us to get that to you in advance and publish it, so you comply with both that thing.
Anyone else? I guess the other thing I would add is that there is a duty of care as a council member to do the best we can to try not to put us ourselves in that position where we can't vote on something, and it's our responsibility to be able to. So just as, I know it's hard, we get a lot of questions, so if you get emails, forward them to the car so that they can be included in the record, so therefore it is in part of the record that everyone sees.
Right. And I would say, you know, we've received some emails this week, I think they're car emails, I guess that's what they are, about the planning commission's decision, and my intent is to respond to those by saying, council has to make a decision based upon their hearing, their testimony, their record. And so, you know, thank you for this information, we will make it a part of the record as appropriate, and, but they can't consider it, you know, now. And that's the danger, you know, this stuff starts coming in after or before planning commission, but really, it's not of concern to council, because they're your recommending body, but you're going to make the final decision appealable to court. So, you know, in the future, I think that's an area where I would recommend those cars, you know, don't go back to council, but you trust staff to say, you know, they're going to have a hearing, and so this information will be supplied to them when appropriate and if appropriate. That's the cleanest route to proceed forward. And all of this comes, if it's contentious hearing and it gets appealed to court, all of it will matter. If it's not contentious, you make your decision, you know, then it's not as big an issue, but that's why we should follow the same practice every single time.
When in doubt, call Tammy.
And call me. I love talking through these issues, yeah.
Only a lawyer loves talking through this stuff.
You can do the right thing, right? Thank you for listening to that again.
All right, strategic plan update.
So Rob's going to come forward into a very brief introduction. We are going to handle the session a little unconventionally tonight, so we're going to actually break you up into small groups and hopefully have a little more hands-on conversation. So through this process, it's been about engagement, involvement, and trying to make sure everybody saw themselves in the plan, and so you all have provided feedback at many points. We do have some of the employees that were involved in planning teams that are with us this evening to answer questions, hear your suggestions and your reactions. You do have a printed off version of the full draft in front of you, and what we've done is it's broken the four areas of the strategic plan into four spaces, so that again, you can interact with employees in a little more informal, human scale kind of way to provide feedback, so that again, we make sure that this is a plan that reflects you and your goals for the city and what you're hearing from your constitution. So I give Rob the floor to give other instructions.
Yeah, really quickly, we got, knowing you need enough time to kind of prep for the meeting, we've got about 40 minutes, so I'm just going to talk about how this is going to work, and then you can go on your way.
And we have two executive sessions still.
We were planning to do those after the.
Okay.
The, we, we, we wanted you to break into groups of four, we thought with your ward mates makes sense, and Mary, you can just join whichever of the groups you'd like. We're going to do 10 minutes at each of the goals, so connected communities first, if Ward Two, you wanted to start over there, safe support level communities, Ward Three, you can start there. Let's see, organizational excellence is in the council conference room, you guys can start there, Ward One, and then vibrant and pervasive development is in the CMO conference room, if you all want to start there. The team leads will walk you through a really quick presentation, and then you've got dots and post-it notes, green dots for things you like, red dots for things maybe you don't think are priority, and post-it notes for anything. We hope that we can get some good feedback from you, and sorry to make this a joke, but appreciate your feedback. CMO conference room? Yeah, get out of here. And I'll come around and I'll move you around at the 10 minute mark.
See, council.
Yeah, sorry, you're, you're correct.
Yes.
Thank you for coming to us about that one. Thank you. This presentation is. And acknowledgement.
I know, you know, it's kind of the second time this happened.
You guys, is that okay? Safe, supported level communities.
Over here?
Yep, yep.
You don't know how that just from the slam. Again. No, I understand. There's no COVID test, yes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that why you guys will ride with me in person?
Team is a little bit spread out, so we got safe support level communities. As we go around the room, I'm going to have one of our team members walk through the goal, and I think what we'll do is we'll go through all the goals first and then come back and go through. So we're going to start with the goal, I'll turn it over to Josh to take it over.
Then I'm going to read them all.
Yes, they're just going to give a quick highlight.
And then you can look at them. You can stick them actually on. There are things you particularly like.
Green dots are the thing that I like.
Green is good, yeah. Any kind of. Any sense or suggestion that you got? Nothing you don't like. Have to, I mean, I think if there's things that you're kind of.
One more other master plan.
It's fair. It is in the packet. I'll just. Or if you think everything, all the bullets are on point and. Right.
The other thing is.
I'm this one, right? Yeah, I could do this one, sure.
Alright, so goal movement to destinations reliable, easy to use, timely and accessible overall. So we got sort of a, under the athletics, we were funding options, including partnerships. But a reliable option for real time. Accidents, we noticed that um, putting this with their cities sometimes don't like, don't always. That they're supposed to change and sort of reroute, also traffic loads a bit better, but that doesn't always happen. So we kind of figured out. Like there might be serious studies to kind of cooperate with our neighborhood. That is working in a really collaborative, coordinated fashion. Uh, also determine a strategy to reserve land for future mobility hubs, transit stations and key trail connections. Uh, develop a plan to provide easier connections to key regional trails and destinations. And then last, explore opportunities for the party mapping platforms to accurate issue trails and connections, because we know that some of the existing ones don't. Uh, are always made up to date or will always show all those. Yeah.
So this goal is to provide the app enjoyable experiences.
It is their property. That's an obligation and that takes.
You've made your decisions. Alright, we get it.
Um, so our goal is foster engagement and form community.
I'll pin your feedback in. Like speed dating. For the next.
I'll send you.
Yeah.
Search it. How four years.
Change it right when you pull up to the light, six thirty A M.
Totally your friend, it's just.
I know there are.
When you're at a, when you go to a trail.
See it myself. And all the rules of engagement here.
Well, a few of us are waiting.
Oh, okay, I got it, yeah.
It was right, I was just gonna say.
YouTube.
I like it. I hope you have that stretch. I wouldn't worry about reading every six sentences.
Yeah, I'll agree. Get one red.
If, if, if not, you're weighted.
Somebody here.
Service. I'm in the middle, so perfect, alright. So really our goal is based on, this, this middle goal is based on movement and destination to the city is reliable, easy to use, timely and accessible. Well, I'll let you kind of read through the bullets if I can answer any questions. Really, it's kind of being good on um. Like branded hubs and yeah, sort of the light patterns and, you know, can we coordinate, collaborate some of the light centers based on, you know, action. Kind of near, near to my heart is in the fire department. Um, and so I'll let you read through the goals. So the action items, but happy to answer any questions you got. I don't even, it was really good. I could do it again.
Our goal is um, safe connections, so uh, to provide safe connection for women to access for all. And the action items are summarize, uh, is.
Yes, way back.
The vision we are planned by uh, value options program funding, prioritize uh, project. Being a communication plan, uh, identify barriers, uh. Prioritize, then identify corridors for operational improvements and also um, also potential um, collaboration.
And then the third one over here, uh, is that connections are going to need. Uh, I guess I'm really getting at uh, like I'm the technical. You know, things for a way to go from, you know, things. Um, and so by doing it by improving trails, you know, these are even more long trails. Um, we're hoping to.
And if you're priority, you added to the thinking. Something you think is missing or if you really want to. Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a. It's actually a good way to save the dots. That's actually is a pretty effective way to do it. They are pretty good. I was gonna say, a lot of people. Probably on the way here. Yeah, yeah.
That's no crap, traffic calling.
Were you, were you involved?
Not driver calling.
Yeah, 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 the traffic was called.
Yeah, there's two more rooms.
Well, I, I was after, I thought that's where you went.
Oh. You back there? No, I had to go to the restrooms.
Let's be the fourteen function and move. Why don't you guys come, we'll go over to the council conference room. It's good to see you. Yes, Cap. Thank you. Presented once that, I think at a side level, um, when they just know the numbers, one more communication. I'm the first time we really have someone that's like, see that prioritizing. Uh, and then when they prioritize them, that you're gonna, they're gonna call this down. Terms of communication of what we put out matters. However, we can proceed that into community service with what we say. That's a big one, get the first green light. I'm catch one. It does, it does. I always try to leave in certain times.
So like this.
Oh, really? Weirdly, that makes sense. Yeah. Sometimes, yeah, because sometimes I have meetings like scheduled down.
Take some of the pressure off of meetings.
Go meetings around three o'clock. Once it's one part of the view, because explaining the terms of. But it's a very helpful. Oh, yeah, so I wrote out the same script, like if they tell them to wear optics. But then you guys go to. Yes. What? No, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine. You guys are already great.
Ready to get connected.
Was not like. So they've already, they've already seen. Hold up, Fred, hold up, hold up. Sorry, you guys gotta go over here. Sorry. You guys gotta go over there. Sorry, you'll get them now. Yeah. Read that. Keep that energy, read that energy.
No, we haven't been using.
I like it, guys are gonna, just wanna see it all.
Write them down, because if we're talking, mercy's got it. Okay, okay.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Probably doing things like a working trails.
And then having certain areas in the city. You know, making it a walkable area. Then your trails can get you up there.
Yeah, well, that would be.
So I like this idea.
Yeah.
Merple's to build trust in both real and our security and state competent development. Uh, where there's, in all the restaurants, um, they've been first off to build. They're also building.
Oh, really?
Which is a department, so very.
Yeah.
Well-known intersection, that will be built out, but it can happen because they did that on their own. So kind of this is our.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah. You guys don't have a chat. Business community. Yeah.
Development. Training partnerships.
Love it. Uh, mine is movement to destination, so the city is reliable, easy to use, timely and accessible. Uh, so this is really kind of centered around exploring funding options for our already robust transit plan and micro mobility plan. Then it's kind of the plan for first, then we drill. I know. Uh, this is a popular. Determine a reliable option for real-time notification of major traffic. To adjust local sign timing and course, so that it kind of helps live load traffic.
Or negative.
Uh, determine a strategy, preserve land. Transit stations. Uh, develop plan for these. Trails, destinations also. Be a little bit more robust.
We can get with the name individually. Company that does mapping for oncologists. People give this as a name.
Ever heard that one?
Yeah.
They have a space here, they're much more.
Um, and the last goal is the safe connections, the transportation by, by safe connection for movement. And action items that we have is support that we can go on to plan by um, somebody not just program funding. Recommended, identifying barriers and safety issues uh, for people to be able to use public transportation facilities and not so many. On like the last mile of connection evacuation station or things like that. Uh, then it's by priority. Areas, sure, um, and uh, we do that one, do their thing.
Whether it's financial language.
And also establish across the compartmental regimes.
I, I think, I agree with Chris, like we've got to work cross compartmentalize in order to make sure that these things happen because we should be.
So again, another discussion or communication about. You guys had to hear about it in Colorado and one point back from the east all the way through. Even though we do those communications, I think we go a step further and maybe still learning the first event like that. We're gonna watch these out.
Sure.
Then we look further. Everybody's. That might be patrol. Get aware, because no one pays attention to the emails. My wife knew, but it's still. Um, that judged you maybe and collaborative communications for movement throughout the city.
Where are red dots for?
Bad ones. All green.
Six, four months ago. I did not know that he exists. Yeah, getting kind of information out, yeah. How, yeah. Yeah. Should be a focus on distributing that information for our. Is that easy accessible? One more? One more. Bave you like the AI, you know, peeking out.
Is it time to switch?
Happy to hear.
Okay. I mean, this is a, a big one, like conference, if I really feel strongly about the. Technologically, I think that goes well with. And value. To make the. Uh, also the, um, the conference interview. The uh, focus on engagement. Uh, I think there's like a lot of.
Whole room.
Communications.
With the. I think there could be a lot more with the engagement. I think the. Many of them. Window down. Somehow you need to bring this back.
AI start to do some.
Yes. Yes.
I believe there's more out there, you just don't, you know.
We need to maintain.
Yeah.
I think that's a weird one over there, like that intersection. Go right then, right then, ceiling.
So yeah, that's what we thought.
Hello, again.
Hello. We got started and now.
Now we can.
It's okay, we perfected our pitch, so.
So this, uh, this goal is the safe connections, the transportation system provides safe connection. Obviously for all those users. And um, action items that we have is uh, supported by their action plan by prioritizing. In the action plan as well as value reading. And also communications plans. Public transportation facilities. Um, identify where it has key corridors for operational improvements.
So this overall is. Movement to destinations throughout the city reliable, easy to use, timely and accessible. Like the others. Things like exploring funding options for our already robust transit plan and micro. My journey plan. It's already exist, just funding those plans. Determine a reliable. Timing orders, that's popular. Balls fires. Determine a strategy with this land, with mobility hubs, transit stations and key trail connections. Develop a plan, provide easier connections to keep. And explore opportunities with third-party mapping. As your rail trails and.
But this goal, the connection should provide unique and enjoyable. The journey itself should be. Uh, so you have things just in Boston, to help around the city, you're doing things like that, so can they hopefully make it more enjoyable.
Trust and proof.
That one might all respond.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
We, we get a lot of emails.
I, I bet you do, yeah.
They're like, oh, there are those times with their time. But. Third party, that, that thing, it can be cool.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. One, sorry, team, sorry, team.
Let me explain this to you, I don't. But it doesn't mean I don't like, it means uh, it's all these priorities.
Yeah, it's lower priority.
And it's so hard to preserve. Don't take it.
Yeah, it's, it is good, yeah.
The, the red for me, I don't know about.
Just like, I'll just let it. So we get trouble.
Means of all these things, uh, this would be something, just for me personally.
Yeah, we heard some good feedback too, just like maybe having some of the planning.
I would.
Yeah, as part of the, where we actually build in houses. So that's okay. That, I think that's. Thank you guys so much.
Yeah, and I'll probably.
Evaluation of all of our amenities, your belongings, playgrounds, um, that we have in our spaces to. Understand.
Can I do a cross-functional team?
Yeah.
Work with people you don't normally work with.
Yeah, it was cool.
And uh, did you get to sign up for it or kind of like, you were selected?
Yeah. Yeah, it was a good, it was a good volunteer. That's what it was, yeah. Oh, yeah, I was excited, yeah. I, I know no more about traffic engineering than. I tell my family all the time, I'm like, you don't even know how much goes into this, so.
I, I wish. I wish I could have been in. This dollars like as a, as a. That's nice. But at least I get to, you know.
Yeah, that's so cool. This is gonna be a cool. But you get to see it all the way through, so you gotta, you kind of get a.
I know, but we don't get to have the interesting, like the debates.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it's cool.
So excited. Thanks for inviting us. It's still an invite.
What I mean, your assets.
Yeah, got them all, got them all.
I just want you to. Okay.
I know. Yeah, Thursday, right? See that, it's just like fifty minutes.
Got you.
I got you. We just had to follow us around. Here's what you got. There's just.
He says, Rob said, set him here and he says.
Maybe not fire.
Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the special meeting, can I please get a roll call?
Here, Coleman.
Here.
Here. Here. Here, President Bigelow.
Here.
Ms. Martinez.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
Ms. Salazar. Here. Ms. Sandrin. Here. Ms. Unrain.
Here.
Thank you. Two different executives this evening, so before I ask for a motion to enter, can I please get an overview?
Yes, this first executive session is with regard, instructing negotiators with regard to a potential incentive agreement to bring a sit-down restaurant to the southeast corner of one hundred and thirty-sixth avenue and Interstate twenty-five.
Any questions about that one? Can I get the language for the motion?
Please, uh, the motion should read, uh, a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statutes twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, E, to determine positions relative matters, relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators regarding a potential incentive agreement to bring a sit-down restaurant to the southeast corner of one hundred and thirty-sixth avenue and Interstate five.
Can I get a motion as stated?
Motion as stated.
Thank you, all in favor, please say yes. Any opposed, please say no. Alright, what about the second executive session?
This is an annual update to city council on security arrangements and investigation regarding council security training.
Any questions? You get the language?
Yes, the motion should be for an executive session pursuant to CRS twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, B, specialized details of security arrangements or investigations regarding council security training.
Can I get a motion as stated?
Moved.
Thank you, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, please say no. Alright, we'll move into executive session at nine eighteen PM.